Open this meeting at six thirty-two. This is the City of Sandy Planning Commission meeting. Monday, April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format, so there are some here via Zoom as well as live in council chambers. I will give instructions later about how to give testimony, especially for those on Zoom. But we'll begin right now with a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Wiganer.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsay.
Here.
Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Commissioner Iram.
Here.
Commissioner Hook.
Here.
Commissioner Lee is excused and Chairman Crosby.
Here.
And then I'll, I was gonna start doing this just for the record, Council liaison Maiton.
Present by video.
Thank you.
All right. We had in our packets, the minutes, draft minutes from February twenty-seven, our last meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, changes that anybody saw that needs to be made? Okay, nothing made, so we will deem the minutes as approved, proved as presented. And then it, all of our meetings, we give opportunity for just general comments from citizens. So if you are here either via Zoom or in the, in the chambers and you have a comment that you want to make to the planning commission that does not relate to tonight's public hearing. So this is your opportunity. If you're here on Zoom, then you need to click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are here on the telephone, it is star nine that will effectively raise your hand and wait to be recognized. So if there's any just comments to us unrelated to agenda items, now is the time. Nothing.
No.
Okay. We also have the director's report. Any questions for Kelly or any elaborations of you, Kelly on?
Yeah, I mean, we did have two work sessions, joint work sessions with the council in April. The first one was on April third regarding the COF plan and the first block visions and goals. So thank you for anybody that participated at that. And then there was another work session on April seventeenth for the transportation system plan. If you didn't have an opportunity to attend that meeting, I would strongly encourage you to go on to the website or our YouTube channel and watch the work session. It's only an hour long, the video, but it will really help bring you up to speed for the hearing on May twenty-second. If you don't watch the video, I think you might have some, you might lose some of the context when we bring that for a hearing on May twenty-second, the next month. So if you can watch that, I would strongly recommend it. And then the next two meetings on May twenty-second, we have the TSP recommendation and then it'll go before council on June twentieth. And then on June twenty-sixth, we have Cascade Creek Apartments, which is to the north of Bornstead Park. And then unless there's a continuance, we won't have a meeting in July most likely. So I'm gonna try to give everybody July off. Plus, I'll be taking vacation, so it might be hard to have a meeting anyways. So e- even if we do have a continuance, it might have to be continued to like a mid-month date in August, just so everybody knows. I think that's all I have to update on unless anybody has any questions. We are still pretty slim in our department, but we're going through the budget process, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to hire some new staff members in the near future.
Good. All right, any, any questions for anybody? I will give opportunity for Counselor Maiton to, Chris, if you have any words of wisdom to us from City Council, we need to hear or anything like that.
Well, thanks, Jerry. Yeah, I don't really have anything to add from the council. I certainly wasn't prepared to say anything, but I, I think, as Kelly just mentioned, council understands the short staffness that, that the planning department's having and I'm looking to at least voice my, my help in trying to raise, raise the awareness across city council, make sure they get the help they need to to get the jobs processed. And I, I know the moratoriums had a lot of effect on, on development, slowed things down a bit. And, you know, hopefully in the, the coming months ahead, when we get those, the tests back, the test results back on capacity, we'll be able to lift that and, and get development back underways. And the only other message, I've been the, the sole supporter of reducing SDCs as they sit. I've had a lot of developers call me and, and argue about it, and I don't mean reduce for new builds. I'm talking about anybody that was in the existing pipeline. So I think we're voting on that in, in the next session or, or the one after that. It's, it's coming up really soon. And I'm probably the, the leader of pushing that to the table, but we'll see what happens with that. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate your attendance tonight, Chris. All right. We have one public hearing tonight, which is actually a continuation of, of the public hearing began at our last meeting. So we will open that or actually can reopen it, continue it however we're supposed to say it, at six thirty-nine. And this is file twenty-two dash zero three-one, State Street Homes Mixed-Used Development. I'll begin by calling for any abstentions from anybody at the planning commission. And nothing seen or heard, any conflicts of interest to declare? Okay, nothing, any ex parte contact, including any site visits? You know, we talked last time, most of us drive by it. Okay, then I'll call for any challenges to the planning commission. Yeah, we will go over how to give testimony again when the time comes. If you do testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Actually, I shouldn't have read that because I'd already implied at the initial hearing, according to my notes.
People can still request it, but you wouldn't have to grant it this time around. So I think it's still an accurate statement.
Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. With that, we will go to staff report.
Okay, and just so you all know, everybody on the call, I promoted Mark, I think his last name is Wild and Mercedes, who are on the applicant team, they're both panelists. So obviously, they have their cameras and microphones turned off right now, but just so you know, they are on the call. And when it comes time for their presentation, they're already promoted to panelist. So let me share my screen here. So I just have a short presentation. It's gonna be much shorter than the one Emily did a few months back. But, what is this? I just kind of wanted to remind everybody of what we were looking at really quickly. And then also to kind of bring you up to date with some of the new submissions that were entered into the record. So again, this for State Street Homes Mixed-Use Development. It's a whack. So the vicinity map, it's to the west of Bluff Road, to the north, Highway twenty-six. Kind of the northeast of that Paola Pizza Barn and also to the east of Les Schwab. So the red, the property outlined in red is where this is located. And the reason why the Paola's Pizza Barn site is also outlined in red is because some of the improvements are also on that property as well. So it's both properties that are being approved. So, and this is kind of a zoom in shot of that. If you look throughout the staff report and through the evidence in the record from the applicant, also from like the city engineer, ODOT, and other comment letters, you will see these two tax lots referenced. Tax Lot one thousand is owned by the Paola family, and that's where the Pizza Barn is. Tax Lot nine oh two, they used to own or, or they're in the process of selling to the State Street Homes folk for development. So that, again, they're both included in this development site. The proposal on Tax Lot nine oh two is a mixed use development with ground for self-storage, three upper floors of residential toward forty-two units and then other amenities on the site that are typical of any new build such as parking landscaping, outdoor recreation areas, trash enclosures, that kind of stuff. Then on Tax Lot one thousand is the Paola Pizza's Barn and the main, the main changes on that site are relocating the existing driveway and reconfiguration of the parking lot landscaping, as you'll see in a couple of slides here. The review procedure, it's a type-three design review. So typically, a review like this would just be done by myself or any other staff members we might have at the time that are planners. This one went up to a planning commission hearing because of the variance requests and before you tonight, there's five variances, three of which deal with wall heights and fence height, one of which is new since the February twenty-seventh hearing, and this is a wall offset request from the applicant. They looked at the findings and conditions that were in the staff report from February twenty-seventh, and they saw one of the issues with their proposal was four foot offsets instead of the required eight foot. So they're requesting a variance to that. And then the last variance is for tree retention standards. They're having a hard time meeting the minimum retention standards. So I'm gonna walk through four slides of the requested updates. So these were kind of, there might have been other kind of small level requests from the planning commission on February twenty-seventh, but these were the main ones that kind of rose to the level of asking the applicant to supply more information, and it was the majority of what you asked for. But as you'll see, this, these five bullet points are all updated site plan details that we wanted. They did supply all of this information. You can find it all on different pages in Exhibit Y, which is one of the new documents that the applicant submitted. It's their new revised plan set. The one issue which I'll go into more detail on is on the access driveway on twenty-six. And there's issues with the indenture from ODOT. So I'll elaborate on that in a few minutes here. Some other requested updates had to do with elevation details. So they supplied both of, they supplied the information that the planning commission was looking for on that. However, as I already said, one of them is requiring a variance request now that they've kind of looked at it a little closer. There was, there was a request to do kind of a updated tree retention plan from both staff and the commission. They did not supply that, although as you'll see in a few slides, I don't think that's the end of the world because of the access location and what that's going to limit here. So I, I don't think that was actually a big deal in the end because a lot of these trees, such as four, four point one, five, seven, the, there's not going to be an ability to retain them. Some of the other requests were retaining wall and guardrail details. They did submit some additional information. I'm not gonna go into all the details at this meeting. They did submit some additional information to confirm some of the heights and locations. It is still lacking a lot of information on construction. So there's a lot more information that needs to be submitted with the construction plans. For the purposes of the planning commission, though, the height is what really you're reviewing and the finished details. I did add a condition in both of finding and the condition section to address a public comment that we've received from the neighbor to the north. He has submitted some information on, he wants to see more details, and I agree with that neighbor that we want to make sure that there's no stormwater issues and no issues downhill. Essentially, that's a requirement of all applications. So there is some additional information that's gonna have to be provided by an engineer if this application gets approved and it is in the condition section. So not only will the construction plans have to be updated to adhere to the standards and be reviewed by our engineer, there's gonna even have to be another kind of step, and that's gonna be a letter from their engineer basically guaranteeing their work so that there's no downhill effect. So it's usually not included, but I, I agree with the property owner of the north that since the construction plans are, since it's not a construction plan ready details, we do need some sort of guarantee that that's not gonna affect that property. Three additional items that the planning commission specifically requested were the proposed hours of the self-storage facility. That was not provided in either of the materials that the applicant provided. So you might be able to get that information from them verbally tonight. There was a request for a pedestrian access from Paola's Pizza Barn to the entrance on there, and that is shown on Exhibit Y. I thought they did a good job of incorporating that, and they're gonna do like a colored concrete, the concrete inlay, which will be great for, especially at nighttime for people being able to see pedestrians through the parking lot. And then they did specify additional location of mechanical and communication equipment. So that's in Exhibit Y as well. So they did fulfill most of the requests that were from this group and from the staff. So just to touch upon this variance, it's the code. The code is pretty hard to meet. I will be very honest, for multifamily developments. It requires that every twenty feet, basically, there's an eight-foot offset. I think in my twelve years of working here, I believe I've only seen one multifamily complex ever meet this with a variance request, which to me signals that we need to revisit our code. So staff is in support of this variance request. Most of the apartment complexes in town have gotten this variance request or at least at least a adjustment, which allows like a foot and a half reduction. We do recommend that they update the building elevations on the west side to include more windows. That's the side facing Paola's. So to kind of liven up that base floor elevation. You know, right behind those windows would be storage units, so maybe they'd be boxed windows or something like that. We've allowed that in other locations, but it would at least give some glazing effect on that bottom floor. So I think that's an important element to consider tonight. So here's the revised site plan. This, this is in Exhibit Y. So this is the State Street Home site. This is Tax Lot nine oh two, so the one on the east side. As you can see, they did a lot of work compared to, I mean, they, they really revised it. If you had them side by side, you'd realize there's a lot more details in the landscaping, all the parking lot, all the parking spaces actually meet our dimension requirements. And they put a hammerhead there for a turnaround for both fire truck and for a delivery vehicle. They put some more descriptions on this for gazebo and pavilion, fire pits, civic space. One of the biggest things they did is they bumped the building fifteen feet more north as required so that the existing sewer line that runs along the south part of the property can be accommodated and not impacted. What this will also do is keep a lot of the excavation further away from the trees to the south for the property owner to the south. So I think, I think this is a real positive thing overall to get that building a little further away from the north, from the south property line. They will have to record an easement for that sewer line through there. So quite a few changes, especially if you look at this exhibit compared to, I think it's Exhibit C, where they showed the old site plan. So here's one of the big considerations for tonight. Staff worked with ODOT. We had a couple of meetings. And so that, the request from the planning commission was to move. So it, let me back up a second. So the driveway currently is at approximately station seven fifty-nine plus forty. So that, that doesn't really mean anything to a lot of people. It's just identification on the highway, basically. We'll keep it at that. So that's pretty much where the existing driveway is. You know, I think the planning commission and the public for the most part wanted the driveway to stay at that location. The development code also wanted it at that location to kind of preserve the existing landscaping that fronts along the highway frontage. When they were submitting this application, they worked with ODOT to secure what's called an indenture of access. So basically, access rights to both of the properties. And what ended up happening during that process is moving the driveway to the east a little bit to what's called Station seven fifty-nine plus eighty-five. I'll show you in a slide here. But basically, after some conversations with ODOT, they're not, they're not really willing to relocate at pack seven fifty-nine plus forty. So at this point, it's going to be at seven fifty-nine plus eighty-five. I can't, I can't as the planning director force them to allow an access to their facility other than where they say it's permitted. So we're kind of, what's that?
Them being, no doubt.
Yes. So for better or worse, it's gonna have to be located at seven fifty-nine plus eighty-five. The unfortunate thing is that means trees and landscaping will be removed. And what it also means is that some of the details that they just updated in Exhibit Y are gonna have to revert. So there's gonna be quite a few updates that staff's just gonna have to work with the applicant on, but it's because of the requirement to have the access in a certain location. So these are some of the trees that will be gone. So not the big ones on the back there. Those are on private property to the east. But some of that landscaping along the frontage will be gone. That landscaping to meet the code, some of it will have to be relocated to the west. So that, you know, the site has a landscape buffer per, what is it, chapter seventeen ninety, one twenty F, I believe. So.
We'll take your word.
I think that is the section. So to meet that code section, some of this landscaping, basically, that's taken out, there will have to be some replanted landscaping, and that's reflected in both the conditions and findings before you tonight. You, you'll see here, the, this is the revised site plan in Exhibit Y, and it shows basically the preservation of most of that landscaping there. It also shows the driveway approximately at station seven fifty-nine plus forty. This is kind of the access and the layout that the planning commission and the public are requesting at the last meeting in February. But because that will not be allowed, basically, it's gonna have to move back to seven fifty-nine plus eighty-five. So back to the, the station location that was mentioned at the February meeting, which will mean the, the existing driveway will have to be abandoned. And then there'll have to be more landscaping brought basically across the portion of that driveway. And then we'll need to work with the applicant further to reconfigure some of that parking in front of Paola's. So that's kind of what we're essentially stuck with at this point, is that driveway location right there. So the overall recommendation is to approve the mixed-use development and parking lot reconfiguration. You know, I've been doing this for quite a while, and I, I would say that the applicant worked with us pretty good between the February twenty-seventh meeting and the hearing tonight. They tried to accommodate most of the requests. The driveway one was really outside of their control. They did what they could by revising the plan set. I did what I could by talking to ODOT. In the end, probably for good reason, you know, ODOT is making the driveway location at Station seven fifty-nine plus eighty-five. I, you know, I would say just for the public that's here in attendance and potentially listening at home, this application overall, it's the proposal, the proposed uses are allowed in the zone. The building meets the setbacks, it meets the height requirements, it meets the parking and landscaping requirements. There are a few variances, but really, they're not uncommon to Sandy. We get quite a few variances associated with slope issues around Sandy because it's hilly here. So retaining wall variances are not uncommon, as, as you could testify to Jerry. Tree, tree retention variances are not overly, I mean, it's pretty common. And then, like I said, the offsets to the building are a, a pretty common request as well, which, which I think signifies we need to revisit that code section. So I, I think with that, that's kind of the recommendation from staff. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing us up to date. Any commissioners have a, an immediate question of staff? Okay. We will move on to the applicant presentation and I guess you can turn your cameras on so we can see you would be great. And you probably know the routine to give us your name and your address for the record. I'll be repeating that for the public in a bit, but we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Sorry about that. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna turn my key on. Anyway, thanks, guys. This is Mark Willoughby again, here a couple of months ago, State Street Homes. And I'm sorry, did you want me to state my address?
Yes.
Three zero six eight eight Southeast Country Living Lane, Boring nine seven zero zero nine. Um, I don't have a ton to add. Kelly did a great job with the updates. I think there was quite a few things that we needed to kind of get through from the findings from the last hearing. We've continued to be excited about this project, super willing to work with all of these changes. I think the biggest frustration for us, of course, is the unwillingness from ODOT to consider the change on that access. We actually preferred the accent that was recommended by staff, and we, we've gone back to ODOT. Kelly also has gone back to ODOT. It seemed unwilling to make that change. So we're prepared to mitigate as required by staff's recommendations to replace that, the landscape buffer zone and some of the other things that we need to do to make that less impactful for Sandy and for the neighborhood. Um, I've read through this, the updated staff report from Kelly many times. We're, as a group, speaking for State Street and the developers, we're, we're willing to kind of work with pretty much every recommendation that he's put in there. We plan to make those updates. And I'm just trying to think, I guess that's probably about it for us. I do want to defer a little bit of time to our design team and Mercedes if she wants to take it. But that's all I really have as far as our representation from the developer. I'm obviously willing to answer questions too.
Thank you. You can pop it over to Mercedes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. My name is Mercedes Butchess. I am with Studio Three Architecture. My address is five four two four Northeast Word Lane, Kaiser Organ, nine seven three zero three. And I honestly don't have much to add on top of Kelly's presentation and Mark Willoughby's additional comments. Just to add to Mark's, Mark's comment in regards to the staff report, everything in there that Kelly had outlined that will be conditions of approval are items that we will address in the building, construction documentation, and when we submit for building. So I don't think there's anything that is out of our wheelhouse to be able to put within the project. So and again, the ODOT access is kind of, kind of what it is, unfortunately. Trying to, to maintain that existing landscape buffer was our, our ideal want for the project. But again, that doesn't seem like it's gonna be a possibility with ODOT. So I don't have anything else further to add other than that.
Hey. Did you have anybody, any other presenters, Mark?
No, I think that is it for our team.
Okay, well, if we've got questions, we will, we will be asking. Okay, we'll move into public testimony at this point. And we will be calling, or I will be calling for testimony in three sections, those who are in favor, those who are not in favor, and then those who just have a Testimony in three sections, those who are in favor, those who are not in favor, and then those who just have a neutral. Position that are neither for it or against it of a comment or a question perhaps. And as I said before, if you are here via Zoom and you wish to give testimony. Then you click the raise hand button in Zoom and then wait to be recognized by Kelly. If you've called in on the telephone. It is star nine that will raise your hand and wait to be recognized by Kelly. So we will begin, and as I said before, if you're giving testimony, please begin by giving us your name. And your address for the record for those here in the chambers will have you move to the podium so we can get it on the recording. With that, we will call for any testimony in favor of the proposal. Any raised hands?
Not sure.
Okay, and then we will move right on to testimony against the proposal or not in favor. Come on up to the podium, give us your name and your address and the floor is there, then yours.
Thank you. My name is Dan Kofor. My address is. Three seven nine five oh Meeker Street, directly to the north. And I own several lots in there. I'm a little bit over three acres. And so I was concerned it shows on their drawing that they have a drain line going down through the middle of my property. I have not agreed to that. So. I don't think they can do that, can they?
There will be a response to the response to that.
Okay.
Coming.
That's one of the questions. And so another question, this might not be the time or what. I was told that. I believe you were on the conference call when I purchased some of that less swab property. And they said that that was a commercial property. Everything between Meeker Street and Highway twenty-six was commercial property. No residential property. And now I understand they're putting in forty-two units. So does that mean my property qualifies for putting in commercially, I mean residential, high density residential?
Okay, that'll be answered.
Okay. So I guess that's the questions I have.
Okay. Can you? Pull up that aerial of the property that maybe you could show us where your property is that would.
Okay.
Maybe be helpful to us. That was one of the early slides.
Hold on one second, sir. I have to.
I don't know, that'd be helpful to me.
Yeah, hold on one second.
My neighbor and.
Okay, well, we'll, once we get it up, maybe keep it on the screen and then.
Here we go.
Okay, now, can you? Sort of point to us where your property is, so we. Okay.
I'm all those lots.
South of Meeker Street.
This also right here.
Okay. Thanks. That drain line was that blue line.
Yeah, I'll address both the questions, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Somebody else? Don't be bashful.
You want me to leave this vicinity?
Yeah, I think so, because he'll probably, but yeah, no, come on up, come on up, we're just, we're just talking.
Okay, so.
Name and address. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Dennis Petros and I live at one seven one five. Bluff Road in Sandy and I'm Dan's neighbor. Yeah, and I appreciate Mr. O'Neil. Making the comment that there was gonna be some engineering that required for drainage of that wall. It's important to me and. Maybe important to Dan too, just to make sure that during construction, we don't have any. Problems when it rains here occasionally. The other thing is, you know, this wall, in the code, it says that the, that. That unless the wall is inherent to the property and for the purpose of the property. It really requires kind of an upper level. Variance and an approval. This is not, this wall is not required in order to develop that land. You park in there and no wall will be required whatsoever, which is part of the uses, allowed uses. The wall is. Inherent to building. A large structure that they want to put a lot of parking in for. But that's not required for the use, for the property to be used. There are many other uses available to the city that. Would provide, you know, equal benefits that wouldn't require a fourteen foot ball. Right there. And. In addition to the engineering comment, you know. Just being a good neighbor, Dan and I take care of our property lines together. We talk about it, we work on it, same thing. My, with Ben, who's a renter on the, on the north side of me, we work together on that. Because it's sandy and we take care of each other. It's not, you know, we don't just throw concrete down and. Then. Leave a neighbor to the north to figure out how they're gonna manage that micro distance between the wall. And an existing fence. So, and I'm not allowed, but I've read the, the way I understand the code, and maybe this is a question for Mr. O'Neil. The way I understand, I cannot spray on someone else's property. I can only take care of whatever grows on my side of the fence. So if an ivy grows or whatever organic material grows between, because there will be stuff that grows, we all deal with this at our homes. We have to manage things. There is no, there's no room in there to, for anyone to maintain it whatsoever. It would just be, as I, as I indicated in that photo, which is a, a pretty good analog for what they're proposing. It's just a concrete wall. And a metal fence and those two are all but touching. With lots of room for other things to grow that I can't take care of unless it's growing on my side of the fence. And then I'm like, I don't know. That's just, it's kind of a mean thing to do frankly, and not neighborly. So at least provide some distance in there for somebody to run a lawnmower through or weedy or something. I have no idea how they, I mean, it's just that there's, it makes it complicated and I would appreciate, you know, some consideration there. The wall is not required in order to develop that property. And that variance specifically states that unless it is required to develop the property. Then it's, it shouldn't be approved. I think I made that statement in my previous comments too. So. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Katsoulis and I live at three eight one oh five Highway twenty-six. And I spoke last time and I had it all written out, but I figured it's pretty much the same thing. My same concerns and of course, some of them are very personal. Because I live in the lot right in between the substation and Paola pizzas. And this house has. A special historic and sentimental value to me. Because my grandfather built it a hundred years ago and he was the first mayor of Sandy and he did a lot for this town. He gave land for the first high school, which is now the middle school. And he gave land to the masons and he, I guess. I'm trying to protect the house. We've built, you know, we have trees all around our house. And we can't, we can't have trees high enough to hide this. Huge building that's gonna tower over us in our backyard, literally pretty much in our backyard. And so that's, you know, yeah, it's a personal thing, but I also feel that it's. That they're trying, I know money is important to so many people, you know, progress equals money, it seems like. And I'm sure they want to get the most money out of this lot. Forty-two families coming out of one driveway. Onto a forty mile per hour highway. Seems like a recipe for disaster because it's hard for me to get out, takes me five minutes sometimes to get out. Of my driveway and I talked to somebody at ODOT today and she, she really wasn't a whole lot of help. With this situation. She just said whatever the city council sends them, they look at it and they. You know, if it meets all the state standards, that's okay, but I wondered if they come out here and, and really know what it's like. To get on this highway, you know, it's, I think it's a big thing. That's all. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else anywhere? Okay, we'll call for a neutral testimony, just general comments, neither for or against the proposal. Okay. We will move on to staff recap and this is the time when staff will be responding to some of the questions.
Yeah, so the, the first one was around the stormwater line. You know, the applicant will have to secure that stormwater line by. Excuse me. Negotiating with private property owners, so. And if they can't do that, then they'll have to find an alternative means to get the stormwater somewhere else. They can't force Mr. Kover. Or any private landowner by that matter to give up part of their land. For the easement. If negotiations fail. They're not, you know, the applicant's not a public entity, so they don't have the power of eminent domain or anything like that that they can force. That a city or, or a county or a state jurisdiction would have the ability to potentially do. So that's kind of answering that first question is that. You know, if they want to bring the storm line up there, that's a civil matter, they would have to negotiate with you, sir. And if they can come to terms and they can put it through there with an easement, and if they can't, then they're gonna have to come back. To myself and to our. Public Works Department and figure out another way to convey their stormwater to another location. So that's what I have for you on that one. The second one is the commercial residential. Yeah, and the reason why it's allowed is because it's commercial on the first floor. It's storage units. Would I rather there be a different commercial use? Of course I would. I live in town myself, so. I'm not that excited about storage units either. However, saying that it is an allowed use in that zone or was at the time that this application was submitted. And as long as the first floor is devoted to commercial, then the upper floors can have residential.
So my property can do the same thing.
Correct. Not storage unit. So that's, that's the second part of that is. After this application was submitted and we had another application for storage units, we've actually removed self-storage from the C one and C two zone. Because the city council wasn't basically want to see, and the economic development committee doesn't want to see that whole area become storage units. So it could be another commercial use of it in storage. It definitely could be. So yeah, your property does have a lot of development potential, I'll just let you know that. And it could be a lot of commercial on the first floor and a lot of residential on the floors above. And that goes for all the area between. Meeker and Highway twenty-six and between Bluff and University, all that areas on C two. So eventually all that area, if people choose to, could convert it to commercial or commercial on the ground floor with residential above. Or if the development code changes someday, maybe. It'll be just residential. I have no idea, you know, I can't really forecast what the future is gonna hold. I, I do know the state of Oregon's. Pushing a lot of housing initiatives through hospitals, so. Wouldn't surprise me in ten years if, yeah, you could just put residential there, but for now you do have to have commercial on the first floor. Spraying onto someone else's property. Yeah, they, they're gonna have to manage that. The code is silent on that. It just says that they have to manage it. They're either gonna have to secure an easement from the property owners to the north. To come through there. Again, that could be negotiated. And if they fail to negotiate that, then. You know, I, I don't know how they're gonna do it. I don't know if they can get like a bucket truck and suspend over the side of the retaining wall. I have no code provision that I can really. Make them like show maintenance on that. I don't know, we've had these before and I, I've never seen an issue, but. I, I do get the concern that's been raised. And then on the last one, the safety and access. You know, it is a state facility with thirty-three, thirty-four thousand cars a day. I mean. I understand the concern and I appreciate it. I was actually in a, in a car accident on Kelso Road recently, so. That wasn't my fault that somebody pulled her in front of me. So I definitely understand the concern there with safety and access, especially with. All the driveways on Highway twenty-six, it is hard to get out sometimes and you have to kind of go out faster. I will say that they did have a traffic analysis done and we had our third party traffic engineer look at it as well. There was no mitigation required for the IT, which is the International Transportation Engineers Manual. The other thing you gotta remember too is that even though forty-two housing units with storage seems like a lot. And it is, I'm not gonna say it's not. There could actually be a use that goes in there that would generate a lot more traffic. So like fast, if there's like a fast food restaurant or two that went back there, like McDonald's for instance. Or Dutch Brothers, that would generate a lot more traffic than the proposed use and they would still have access rights to the highway, so. I understand the concern, but it meets the code. ODOT's allowing the access. Our traffic engineer says it's safe. Will there be accidents at the, at the driveway? Potentially, but there's nothing else to really mitigate for at this point. So I think that covered the main questions or the concerns that were brought up. And then I, I didn't really have anything else. I mean, I understand change is hard. Like I said, I live in town also. But like I said, my, part of my job here is to just review the application. The use fits the allowed use. I mean, really the only thing is the retaining wall height. However, like I said, that Sandy has a lot of topography, so having higher retaining walls is not uncommon, but. Other than that, I think it's a rather straightforward application in a lot of ways.
Could you speak to the comment about? The retaining wall not being required to develop the property.
I'll let our city attorney speak to that.
Okay. You can do that now, Josh, if you want.
I'm not sure that I can answer that question. It feels like that's a question for the applicant about whether they need that retaining wall to. For their development.
All right. If nothing else, we will move on to the applicant's rebuttal and response to comments that you've heard.
Yeah, absolutely. This is Mark. So I'd love to, first of all, thank you guys, neighbors for commenting and. Again, I said this last time in the last hearing, but I certainly can appreciate the challenge of change in neighborhood. As a, as a neighbor myself living in Boring. I understand the impacts of progress and. How that can be difficult for that change. We, I think I mentioned this in the last hearing, but. We identify communities and areas that have a large need for housing. Sandy is definitely. Extremely fast growing, popular area and there is a lot of demand for housing and, and as developers. That's the job that we've chosen is to find communities that need that housing. that's the job that we've chosen is to find communities that need that housing, find appropriate properties and work with the communities and, and local government to provide that housing. I'll, I'd like to respond to Mr. Kover's comments first, I'm glad he showed up tonight, appreciate that. And he's absolutely correct, we cannot, we cannot use his property for that stormwater route without negotiating something with him, and I'm, Dan, I'm pretty sure you remember when we met about a year ago. And we, we just hadn't continued that negotiation until we got to this point, because I needed to make sure that we had approval from the city and the state for this project before we could finish our negotiation, but I fully intended to continue that negotiation with you and find something reasonable to utilize that existing easement in your property and compensate you fairly for that, I hope we can continue that. And if not, if you've changed your mind about that, then we will have to seek an alternative route, which we have a couple identified. But I hope we can continue that conversation and negotiation. But as Kelly said, of course, we can't force you to to, to sell access across your property, that is completely, as a as a private landowner, that will continue to be your choice, and, and if you've changed your mind on that, we will work with on an alternative route. But hopefully we can do that. To answer the, I think it was Dennis that had the concerns about the wall height and the fence. The short answer is, yeah, we, we don't want to build any bigger, taller wall than we have to for a lot of reasons. A, for the impact on the neighborhood, B, they're expensive. C, there are definitely some maintenance involved and, and keeping drainage clear. For this site, as you're aware, the topography is pretty challenging, it drops off pretty significantly in the back half. So really, to do almost any commercial development would require a pretty significant wall, unless we were just building a house, because to meet the requirements for the city of Sandy's parking, which I think are reasonable requirements, it would be absolutely impossible without leveling that site, and the only way to create a level working space with that topography would be to provide that wall. We certainly would have looked at all types of different design ideas here, and this is what we've arrived on. I don't see an alternative to this for any kind of commercial development, even if it was something significantly different than what we're doing. I do appreciate your concerns, and I think they're valid. And I certainly, as a, as an owner, would be happy to work with something that makes maintenance much easier, I'm not sure that we even need a fence between the wall and the property line, and I certainly would have no issue with either providing a maintenance agreement that makes sure that we keep that clear down there, or giving you access to spray when you're spraying your property. Those are the kinds of things that are very easy for us as developers and landowners. Because we, you know, we'll own this property, we will be your, your neighbor to work with you on, so that to me seems easily solvable. We don't, we have no intention of creating a funky, tight space that has no access to be maintained, that, that's not good for us or, or the neighbors. So I hope we can, and find a way to work with the neighbors to make sure that that's not an impact and can be dealt with. I think that was it for our rebuttals, hopefully I answered the questions and, and met the concerns, thank you guys for the other opportunity to speak.
Very well. We will continue with our discussion. And just the word to primarily the ones here in the chambers, we're gonna keep the public hearing open for the sole purpose of the commission and staff being able to ask questions of the applicant. Just a little background on the public hearings, if we were to close a public hearing, which my script is basically what we could do right now. And then subsequently in our discussion, we have one simple question of the applicant, you know, are you gonna paint it red or black? To get that answer, we have to reopen the public hearing, ask the question, get the answer, and then close it. So we have adopted a policy of keeping it open during this time, so we don't have to do that, open, close, open, close all the time for silly little questions. But it is not, it is no longer an opportunity for the public to make comment, it's only between us, staff, and the applicant. So you know what's, what's going on there. So we will move into our discussion points, and as I usually do, ask commissioners for initial concerns, questions that you have, just reminder that our primary decision is on the five variance requests, so we, we make sure that we, we do tackle those. But you may have questions on some of the proposed conditions or whatever, so.
I can start us off, I have two questions to get us going. First question maybe to Kelly, and it's related to the tree variance, kind of, can you give me, or somebody maybe give me just a base summary? What's expected, what are we losing, you know? What's being asked for, variance, just kind of those three big numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I think see retention of one tree essentially. I'm gonna tell these people that.
Close the doors too. Oh, really? Oh, wow. And I've done that in council meetings.
Yeah, so for the most part, so that's a really good question, commissioner, it's kind of hard to answer, and the reason why there's definitely gonna be one tree in kind of the southeast corner of the site. Kind of to the east of the gazebo pavilion, I think that can be preserved, and that's kind of the biggest one, that's a big duck for, I believe. And the reason why it's kind of hard on the rest of the site is because with moving that driveway back to the east property line essentially of the it's gonna wipe out a bunch of trees, plus the code requires for good reason, like a, a walkway to go from the public sidewalk back to palos and the new building. To be quite honest, once you do that, even if you think there might be a tree or two you're gonna save, you're gonna be digging into the root system, and those trees will probably be pretty heavily impacted. So there might be an instance even where you see those trees, if we try to preserve them, quickly decline over the next five or 10 years. So I think there's a good shot that it might be one tree, I think even that tree just with all the development that's already around it, and plus putting more, you know, that could even potentially start to decline over time. So I think my recommendation is that you could, if you were deciding to pass the variance, my recommendation would be to you know, say that that one tree needs to be preserved and as many other trees as possible. But also recognizing that at, you know, at the end of the day, there might be reason to just basically remove them all, like I'd rather that happen than like one of the trees decline and then it fail or something like that and hit somebody or hit a car or something like that.
Or you build around a particular tree, then eventually they're soon dies.
Yeah, and it's, it's, that's such a wild crapshoot. Because like, if you go into our back parking lot, like that huge cedar was built right around with, and it's fine. And then you see other trees that we've attempted to do that in the last 10 years, and within two or three years, they really declined quickly. So it's so hard to predict even with building right up to a tree, which ones are gonna make it and which ones aren't. So I know that's a really long-winded answer, but basically I wouldn't count on really any trees being preserved because of the new driveway location, and at most one. That's what I would say.
Uh, second question was probably for folks online. I saw there was mention of kind of the kind of heights of the retaining wall in the back and kind of that east side. I believe, I didn't see anything related to the heights on the south side. And kind of length, I can, I can see where the north side and the east side are, but there's also something on the south side.
Somebody could elaborate, need like a south elevation.
Are you looking at exhibit Y?
I am looking at exhibit Y. And so I think page eight gave me the wall cross-sections for the, it looks like the north and the east side. But I didn't see anything for the south side. Which I believe was one of the variances.
I know we don't like using paper, but I do miss the days of having the full-size we put them on the floor, and you'd have these drawings and
Yeah, the one, on the one on the south side, just so you know, will be internal to the site. If that makes any difference to you guys. So the, the height will face the development essentially. Because the properties of the south sit higher than
Okay.
Yeah.
That actually does help.
So any impact that you would see from the wall will only be visible.
The site's lower than the
Correct.
ones on the highway.
It'll be visible from
That's actually very helpful.
So I think that wall will have very little impact, at least on the properties to the south.
Right.
Because it's gonna sit below their yard essentially.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
I think it's reflected, if you look at sheet, well, a lot of the sheets, it shows a staircase right by the bike rack area, and I think that's it from the meandering path south of the building down to the site essentially.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. That does it for my big questions, I have some comments, but I'll wait for others to do questions.
Okay.
Of course, I can't find it now, but when I was looking through the things for tonight, there was tree replacement brought up. I believe it was some of the new information in blue, but I can't find it with it right now. But I was wondering if, if that pertains, if we lose all but the one tree, and then it seems like that one's questionable to survives, losing all its friends. Is that included with the required landscaping, or is that in addition to what's required for the easements and the landscaping?
Yeah, I mean, it's really up to you guys, since they're, they're requesting a variance, so you have quite a bit of discretion. So you could say I'm just giving you options, I'm not trying to steer you one way or the other, you could say that some of the trees in the landscape plan satisfy the requirement. You could say that they don't, and that that plan, in addition to the trees already shown in the landscape plan. Those would probably be the main two ways of doing it. And we usually do like to get kind of a like-for-like, so if it's an evergreen, we'd want two evergreens planted, and if it's a deciduous, we'd want two deciduous planted, that's how we typically do it at least.
I think the issue comes is already put on.
Yeah.
That's the that's the, the tight spot.
I agree. I mean, they are proposing quite a few trees on their landscape plan. But that's if you decide that those trees would have been required irregardless of the tree variance, and then so it's the want more or not.
There, because their variance request relates to the tree retention code, not the landscape thing, so that, that wasn't, that didn't enter into the discussion. And it usually doesn't. So. Any other, any other questions or concerns on the, the tree variance request?
No questions for me.
Okay, thanks. I thought the, the comment about, I thought Joshua would help us out on that you don't need to have a wall to develop the property. The code, you know, that sounds like, well, then you can't do this. If that's, if that's your interpretation of the code. But as I was thinking, wait a minute, no, yeah, you could put a park there and, and not have a wall. But then you're mandating what goes there. And they own the property and, and they can they can do what they want, and it's, you know, this is what we want to do with that property, oh, we're gonna have to build a wall, well, the code doesn't say you cannot build a wall.
Well, it says you can't build one that big without a variance.
Yes, but it doesn't say you can't build one at all.
Right.
So it was just an interesting, I thought, I think there's a little bit more to learn on that statement that just because that you, that the wall's required, is required for what they want to do with the property, and they own the property.
Josh, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I think you're pretty well covering it there, the question is whether they what they're proposing meets the criteria in the code. And specifically because they are requesting a variance for the type of walls they're putting in, based on the design of the property that they've selected. Whether that variance application meets their requirements of the code.
Well, and so the requirements of the code would be the type three special variance requirements, right?
Correct.
So, which I happen to have in front of me here. One of the following sets criteria should be applied as appropriate, A, the unique nature of the proposed development is such that number one, the intent purpose of the regulations and of the provisions to be waived will not be violated, and number two, authorization of the special variance will not be material detrimental to the public welfare and will not be interest to other property owners in the area compared with the effects of development otherwise permitted. So I think that's the one, there's a B and a C, but I think that that number two is kind of the one that I'm wrestling with is interest to you know, the properties versus other permitted developments, such as if they were to put a Dutch Brothers on the south part of the property, they wouldn't need a big wall. You know, because they could have enough parking space theoretically. You know, so is it interest to the other property owners in the area? I think it's the way that I'm reading that, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody?
No, I think that's correct, and the question is weighing the information that's been presented to you this evening to determine, make that determination, and so it's a relatively discretionary standard.
So and ju- just to remind you, when we reviewed the wall variance request, we reviewed it under B, which is the variance approved is the minimum variance needed to permit practical compliance with a requirement or another law or regulation, so what it says above A, B, and C is one of the following sets of criteria is shall be applied as appropriate, so we, we use B because we were kind of following the line of thinking that Jerry was thinking that without the retaining wall, well, you needed the retaining wall to permit the practical compliance with the code basically to allow the use essentially.
And so once you apply one criteria, you can't apply the other?
I believe that's how it's written, yeah. It's a very interesting variant section. It's existed prior to me working here, it's never been reworked, this has always been worded that I know of. But the planning commission has the ability to make other findings, you know? That's just how we ran, that's just how we processed it.
I do have a concern, I mean, essentially, if you look at exhibit Y and the the length, you know, the heights of that wall, at best on that north side, you're like twelve feet pretty much, plus another five for the fence. I mean, seventeen feet straight up in the air, you know, that's a good size wall, and that's the smallest amount, right? It gets higher from there, for the most part, I think eleven seventy or something like that was the smallest. For the most part, I think eleven seventy or something like that was the smallest. Essentially go up to twenty feet, which. Is pretty good span.
Wait, what you're saying is you're landing more on the A two. To actually. Be either the variance.
I don't know if I'm 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 open to it. I I have concerns about the wall height. I have concerns about the trees. Those are kind of my two concerns, especially on that kind of backside wall. I I don't know if I'm leaning one way or the other quite yet. Open to kind of what's present. Maybe I do know that. When you look at it, you know, nineteen feet nine inches is. Pretty dark high. Just have a wall inside of your property.
That is, I I see your point. Just looking at that. A two. Detrimental to the public welfare. I don't believe that it that. Doesn't apply. Uh, but not injure injurious. To other property, you know. Clear and objective. What? What does it mean to injurious to the property?
Yeah.
And how does it? How does the wall height? Being greater than. Eight feet. Injured. What the adjacent property.
And what I noticed, which I found interesting, was the difference between the type three special variance criteria and the type three but. Criteria was that it moved removed the word. Materially. Interest. So with the type three, there has to be some kind of. I would assume monetary damage or some kind of material. Uh, injury uh, to have been caused, but it doesn't. Say that with the type three variance, which means that. You know, just any kind of injury. Yeah, be applicable is how at least interpreting the difference between the two. Uh, because I think. The stormwater runoff. Would be a potential. Monetary injury uh, that the property owners could be facing, but I think that that has been. Uh, kind of fixed with the guarantee by the engineer that Kelly put in there, which is great. Those other types of injuries that could potentially happen.
I'd say that, just so you guys are aware, I think the stormwater thing and the overall height of the retaining wall are two different issues. Cause the stormwater thing will be. If there's going to be an issue, it will be prevalent no matter how high the retaining wall is.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you were speaking to the the stormwater getting past the wall. And the code and the words.
Material or monetary injury, yeah.
I mean, what, just so you guys are all aware, the the condition I'm recommending. Wouldn't stop there for being an issue. What it would do is it put the engineer stamp on guaranteeing that there wouldn't be an issue. And then if there is. Then that they would have to come in and modify it. And then. You know, that's kind of on the engineer and then then there's like a civil matter between whatever property got damaged.
Right, there's a pathway for.
Correct. So we're just saying, show us proof that this wall in the drainage will work.
Yeah.
And we're just trusting them in their engineering license. You know what I mean?
Right. Right, it gives it gives a clear pathway for property owners.
Yeah, nothing else we can do.
Correct. I'm not an engineer, so I had to rely on their stamp.
But it is, it's a thing that would not have been. Would not have surfaced had it not been from public testimony.
That's correct.
Does anybody want to explain me one way or the other on the wall height thing?
Somebody who hasn't spoken up.
I. I'd noticed that I think staff has described that the wall height has been a variance used in other complexes and other units. And I hate to get too picky about a variance that we've given to others in a situation. Now that we're seeing a lot of other little pieces, so I don't want to get hung up where it's not. I mean, there's a lot of parts to this one. It's a much bigger space. We're seeing it in a different way. But if that's a variance that staff has applied in others, then I trust them.
Personally, as you asked, I. I I would feel we would be on weak grounds to um. Deny it on the A two. Just because some of those words are a little bit. Slippery and vague. And and B, which is where staff landed. Does make sense. It's a minimum variance needed to. To permit practical compliance with the requirement of another law.
Yeah, and I I think the the main reason why we use that one, just to elaborate on a little further. Is I think Mark actually the applicant did a good job of saying. Without leveling the site. How can you get into compliance with? Parking is the main thing, really. And I think he's correct. I don't know. I don't know how else she would do it like a tiered system with that much slope. You you'd be, it would exceed the fifteen percent slope grade in the driveway standard. Without some other expensive. Mechanism where you have like a parking garage where you can lower vehicles up and down, something you've seen in a very large city without something like that. I don't know how else she would accommodate. A parking lot of the majority of that site. I do agree with Mark on that.
Yeah, that's that's another angle is just thinking of. General commercial property on that lot. Is going to require parking.
I mean, the the only way you could do it is if you bought the property at the north and had access from the north. And then now all the parking is on a lower level and then the buildings on a higher level, but. We can't, I can't force them to buy more property.
Right, right. It's one of the rock and hard place.
I mean, most development sites would be better if. Who's ever developing them had to say. Forty acres. And you could kind of master plan and develop that all at once. That's why there's a such thing as called form based code. That very few cities use, but that's why they use it. So that's kind of like. A large areas kind of looked at and everything's like this is kind of considered when you're. Kind of developing it, but when you develop it parcel by parcel, like most cities like Sandy do. You do run into these odd things where it's like, you know, this property is coming first. The one to the north will someday develop. Further it will. And when that happens, will this affect it or not? I and I don't know.
Right.
Cause I don't know what they will develop.
Exactly. They they will. Play with the the hand that they're dealt from this.
Correct.
Anybody else want to give any input? I haven't heard anything that would um. Strongly against the variances on the the three on the walls. I did have one. It's not not in the variance, but um. I think the applicant made the question or statement or wondered. Is the fence required on that north side? I wondered the same thing. Why are we putting a fence in front of a concrete wall?
That's not required. The only thing that's required is the. The safety fence or railing at the top of the wall to prevent people from falling off the wall. But there is no code requirement to put a fence on a property line, so. There doesn't need to be a fence at the lower level, like in front of the retaining wall, the lower level. Yeah, that's not a code requirement.
Yeah, because he was talking about, you know, retaining wall fence and how do I, I can't spray in here. But if there's no fence there, it would basically. Be your property up to the wall.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier that. I think that introduces more problems by having that fence there. I I agree with him.
Yeah, I just wanted to check that it's not required.
I mean, we would prefer that it's not put in because there'll be an architectural finish on the wall. The fence would be kind of just a. Both a maintenance and a visual kind of.
Yeah.
Barrier, really. I don't think it would look good at all.
Okay, and is that's not a.
You could condition that.
Condition that there not be a fence.
At the bottom of the slope of the wall.
Yeah.
Now that wouldn't, now the other property owner could put a fence.
Right.
But we have no control over that. But it would at least alleviate his concern of there being a may like a little strip of grass or weeds between the fence and the wall.
Yeah.
You could condition that. We would put it as a condition related to the variance. It's up to you.
Oh, I personally like that idea. Either that or we just the applicants here listening to us now and say, oh, I don't have to put a fence there. We don't have to. It just seems redundant. To me.
I mean. I don't know if if they want to put it in, then they see it with it. If they don't want to put it in, then they don't. I mean, that's. I don't know. Condition. I mean. If they want to put it in on their property, then. It just makes it harder for him, so. And cost more money. I don't see why that they would want to. I don't see why it wouldn't necessarily need to be a condition just to complicate things.
Yeah, leave it, leave it to them.
Yep.
And they've heard us say it's not required. It's in the record. That would that would eliminate one one big concern for the public.
He said it, the code only has, the building code only has requirements. Around uh, fences wherever there's a potential for a fall. Or for a swimming pool. Um, and then obviously some facilities like um. Transfer stations and stuff like that or childcare facilities, but there's very few instances where offenses required.
But if we are close to somebody making a motion, the next motion is to close public here.
Chair, I think at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
I need a second.
I second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing at seven fifty four. All in favor, say aye or put your thumb. We don't have the visual. There we go. Put your thumbs up.
Aye.
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 Hey, I think we. Right, so now we can, we can continue discussing. We can add more. Do you've got questions? Are there things we're overlooking? That anybody sees any questions on the? Conditions. What any, any, um, let's look at that, the new uh, variance. Regarding the uh, the recesses of the building. I thought felt the same way. I thought, man, eight foot. That's a sheet of plywood. That's how I always think, you know, laying down a sheet of plywood. That's a big recess. Anybody have any issues or concerns of that variance? Request. Everybody's pretty quiet.
But I do appreciate Kelly adding in the other pieces about the windows on that side. That's gonna be possible. I mean, I think. The variance makes sense to me, given the property, I mean. To me, the intent is that you're not building giant squares and what we have is a giant square. But again, if we take the arguments that we've been making about the routine wall, essentially, we're fit everything in on this property and maximize it. That's basically what you get. So. You know, if you were to, you would lose a lot of the building. Doing it otherwise.
Yeah, if there wasn't, if there wasn't a connection with payoffs. I don't know what she would do with that. Piece of property. You know. You didn't, if you didn't have a good relationship with payoffs, to be able to put a driveway, because I don't think that thing. The uh, flag. On that. Very wide, is it?
Well, I don't think anybody would probably buy it without a needs.
Yeah.
And payless wasn't or was or is the owner. So I don't think that. You know, if they were to sell it, they could sell it without the piece of it.
Almost become a landlocked something. Okay, well. If nobody else is is concerned with things, the motion that we're be looking for. Is one to. Approve. The the uh, the proposal, this is twenty two dash zero three one. Approving the five. Variance requests. And the standards for the conditions of approval as presented in the staff. Updated staff.
Kelly, there were a couple areas in the staff report where. You you didn't specify an amount for the variance in the fence height. For the wall height. And just said that uh, planning commission to determine at what amount they would. Agree with. Should we have the emotions include those specifications or some discussion about that?
My recommendation would be to say. If the if this is the commission's desire that the height is determined. Per the applicant submission.
As submitted, in other words.
Or. I don't know. Yeah, I I think uh. What I would hate to do, Josh, is say. Fifteen feet, and then it comes back that it's fifteen feet and six inches or something like that. Then we'd had to come back through for a modification to the designer view. Which would really be wasting everybody's time.
Right, if if the planning commission is comfortable with what the applicant has proposed. Then that's fine. It's, I guess the question is just whether it's it's. There's any conversation about it being a different amount. By the way, yeah, I agree. I agree with your suggestion, Kelly.
And if we approve the variance based on the the applicant's proposal. Let's say it's eighteen point. One or whatever. They just they. Get down to the finalizing it and they have to do eighteen point two or two eighteen nineteen feet. They're gonna have to come back to somebody. Right, because we've only. No, you're right. We haven't stated. We just said it can be, it can be taller.
Yeah, tha- and that's my concern. Um. I do a lot of these sort of things where. This is planning estimates and planning designed, and when you actually get in there for. The engineered construction plan review. It might be a little bit different. It's usually not going to be several feet different, but it might be. Four inches difference here, six inches different here.
Right.
Happens all the time, even with documents the city has prepared at the planning level. And then we go on to engineering level, and by the time you get complete every, all the numbers are a little bit different. Um, and I know in the past we've set exact numbers for retaining walls and stuff. Like down to the inch. And in in a lot of circumstances, that's actually caused a lot more work for both for staff, really. I mean, what I would recommend doing is doing something like. As proposed by the applicant. Unless otherwise adjusted during construction plan or view up to. A foot or up to six inches or whatever you feel like you're comfortable with. But I I would like it to have a little bit of flexibility. So if it's a couple inches different here and there. We're not having to come back before you for that. It would just be a lot more. I mean, just about a meeting together is a lot of work, so it'd be a lot of work just to. Get a basically a new approval.
Yeah. Well, how?
How? I don't know if Josh has a recommendation for that.
Yeah, Kelly, I think that makes sense of of. The amount that's proposed. With up to six inches or a foot or maybe ten percent variation. Is probably the most workable way to approach that.
Yeah, I like that. That would be deciding what. What measuring stick to use. Have you ever seen one? Drastically grow from plans?
And no, I mean, I I don't mind Josh's suggestion of ten percent, but. I think that'll work. I think also a foot would work. I think less than a foot, you just get into a potential issue of. Oh, it's seven inches and the planning commission said six inches. I don't know. It's just. I I know you had to have a line somewhere. Oh, it's seven inches and the planning commission said six inches. I don't know. It's just, I I know you had to have a line somewhere. So it's wherever you feel like you're comfortable with that line being.
So the proposal. Is is five feet, eighteen point four and eleven point five, zero five, if I'm reading it right. That's what the proposal for the wall is. No, wait, eighteen four is a combined.
Yeah.
So it would be less than that by three and a half feet. If the fences, the guardrail height is all three and a half feet.
Yeah, I think the wall heights listed were anywhere between ten, seven, nine and fourteen nine on the backside.
Yeah, I think Darren's right. So like a fifteen, a ten percent change would allow that to go a foot and a half.
Yeah. Anybody com- anybody not comfortable with ten percent?
I think that's fine. Um, I think ten percent makes more sense on the smaller numbers than the bigger numbers.
Yes.
And I'd prefer to say something like ten percent over a foot because I'd rather the smaller numbers change by ten percent or less than a foot. They, that's a bigger change than vice versa. So ten percent seems to make.
Mm hmm.
Most sense.
Uncomfortable with ten percent.
Okay, so when. Was there anything else, Josh, that you saw that we're overlooking?
No, I think that covers it. Thank.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh. I would have worked it with that.
So then the the motion would be approving the uh the variances and the the three ones related to the wall height. And staff will will reword the the condition to allow for an increase. Of no more than ten percent of the wall. Which is the same effect of the overall. Cause it's gonna have three and a half feet.
It's, I think, just the wall without the fence, because you'd have ten percent of the fourteen nine and not ten percent of the.
The whole.
Yeah.
So it's the ten percent of the wall. And staff can um. Can work that into the final.
Yeah, just to remind everybody on the call in for new commissioners and the applicant. So if if there's an approval tonight. Then what I'll start doing is over the next week or so, working on a final order. And that will have any modifications. Obviously, the track changes will become not track changes anymore, they'll be accepted. And then before I issue that final order in a couple of weeks, uh Chair Crosby will review it to make sure it captures any of the changes from the commission.
Okay, somebody want to take a stab at the motion? Doesn't have to be specifically wordy. It can also reference to what we said.
Uh, maybe we'll put the motion, did we get to where we needed to be for the tree variance? I mean, we didn't have a lot of discussion, but it sounds like maybe it was just, it is what it is and that we like it or we don't.
That's where I was. Specifically, where's the specifics on that?
I think with ODOT limiting us on the access, I think we. Kind of left, what we left was the one tree. Obviously, they can't have trees.
I've seen that.
Some of those are nice trees and all, but.
Roof terrace. Build around it.
It'll be real difficult on a six twelve pitch roof.
Well, instead of a playground, just make it.
But the variance as it's worded now, I was trying to find it on the tree and I'm not.
Was essentially, I think it's once everything's fully mapped out and figured out, they just have to pay the. Pay the five hundred a tree, right? Or whatever they end up missing.
Yeah, you got a few options. You can. Um. Have them plant more trees on what they're proposing on the landscape plan or. Potential, we could do a mitigation tree of five hundred dollars per tree and then we plant it elsewhere in town. There's a few different options.
But essentially, we can't really make it do more because it's already been determined that there's basically no room to do more, right?
Well, they have, they have to retain at least independent of the ODOT uh decision. They have to retain, what is it, four trees, I believe. Is that what the?
They're still before upfront on the west side.
Um, I'm just looking at what the. So here. Based on the size of the property. And I don't think it's four, I think it's seven. Yeah, seven trees is what they had to retain for the code. So if they're only retaining one, then there's six shy. Um, so that would be twelve retention trees.
Yeah.
Or five hundred dollars or retention tree at, so six thousand dollars and then the city would plant them in a watershed area somewhere else.
So, but granting the variance doesn't um. Include the. The pain, the five hundred. Right?
Yeah.
We're just saying you don't, you don't have to. By granting the re, the uh variance, we're saying you don't have to plant the retention trees. As if you, if you. If you need retention, retention trees.
I think they're saying they're only going to have one tree. It's um tree number twenty eight. It's in finding one fourteen on page forty five of the staff report.
And didn't I read somewhere that you wrote in that they would have, as long as there's enough soils based on along those lines, that they would have to plant mitigation trees in that space, but if there's not, then it's the.
Correct.
Okay.
So we could just leave it that way.
Yeah.
Their arborist could determine if there's enough.
If there's space, plant the trees. If there's not, okay.
And it could be that that. Space in the northwest corner. If they can't get the uh easement. Cause that was one of the things, the place that you'd said that they could plant trees, but because of the storm drainage. It would um limit that space.
Okay, where.
One thing I do think important to clarify, which I think was brought up by one of the commissioners is. Are these six, are these twelve mitigation trees in addition to what they already showed in the landscape plan? Typically, that's how we do it.
Uh huh. Yeah, cause well, there's no guarantee that the ones in the landscape plan would necessarily meet the requirements of the mitigation trees, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so then be in addition to in order to.
Yeah. I agree.
Alright. And for consistency, that's how we've always done it since I've worked here. It's in addition to landscape plan.
Well, Chair, since we all seem to be pretty much in agreement and circling the same areas, I move that we. Uh, approve twenty two zero three one with the five variances as listed with stipulation that. Uh, for the three wall uh variances that they end up being within ten percent of what is submitted.
Second.
Okay. Um, let me make sure I get that we got that wording right. It's it's not within ten percent. We talked about not to exceed ten percent.
Right, not to exceed a ten percent variance.
Because if it was eighteen feet in the plan and they somehow came through with a five foot. Wall.
That would be perfectly.
That would be perfect. Say not within ten percent.
It should not exceed ten percent. Ten percent of the wall height.
Yeah, that's what the.
We need to make sure it stipulates the wall, not the wall and the fence.
Right. Not to exceed. Okay, did you second it?
I did, and somebody online did as well.
Oh, okay, I think Hook.
Oh, that's right.
Got it.
So it's been moved and seconded that we approve. File twenty two dash zero three one with the variances and the adjustments that um was in the motion. And the uh conditions of approval in the staff report. I think that's all we need to go to a. Call, the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Wagoner.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Hook.
Yes.
Commissioner Pullen.
Yes.
Commissioner Myram.
Yes.
Chair Crosby.
Yes. Okay, motion carried. If there's nothing else. We will be adjourned. Had or what? I will state, say one thing, Steve. Mr. Hook, since you are the vice chairman, just to give you the heads up. Um. I am not here in August.
All right, sounds good.
Why are I coming back from camping at La Pine? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna end the recording.